Okay, our agenda for the evening is a work session, so we're having presentation, participative discussion, and take it away.
I'll start. Thanks for giving us this opportunity. You probably all remember in our 2011 strategic plan, Douglas County School District took on the work of really considering what should our curriculum be going forward as a school district. And at the time, Douglas County didn't actually have a curriculum per se. We just used the Colorado academic standards as the curriculum for the district. So we spent time working with Tony Wagner, Young Zhao, the board had opportunities to interact with Ken Kaye, and Dana and her team brought together teachers to really evaluate the quality of the Common Core standards as well as the Colorado academic standards. So tonight, we'd like to take the opportunity to, in a brief and condensed way, share with you the process that we use to evaluate those standards, create the Douglas County curriculum that includes the content in the Colorado academic standards, but takes our outcomes to a higher level, and then build on that with the assessments that accompany that new curriculum that we've built. Everything in Douglas County is continuous improvement, and so we had GVC or Guaranteed Viable Curriculum Version 1.0, and now we are on Version 2.0 with an Eye Toward the Future of Version 3.0. And so tonight, we're just going to give the board an opportunity to sort of sit in that chair, understand how we've done the evaluation and the construction or deconstruction of standards, and then also where the assessment will go. And then we're going to finish with a requested item on concurrent enrollment, which talking about Douglas County has a long history of concurrent enrollment, where we've been and what our future plans are in that area. And I believe Mr. Corey Weiss, who's high school director, will be here to be a support on that. So with that, I want to turn it over to Dr. Johnson Strather-Dana, who is our chief academic officer and led the work on creating a curriculum for Douglas County School District, and Matt Reynolds, whoever he is. Oh, he's right there. Sorry, Matt. And he is our assistant performance officer, who is leading the work to make sure that we are authentically and through performance measuring the outcomes that we believe and businesses have told us and higher ed has told us and experts have told us are most important for our students. So that's the work we hope to get done in the next hour and a half-ish, and please let us know what questions and concerns you have along the way. So Dana and Matt.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before we really get into the actual curriculum and the assessment component, we're going to start by having a formative assessment. In front of you is a piece of paper that has one question on it. The question is, what is curriculum? And what we'd like you to do is with a pen, a highlighter, a marker, we'd like you to mark those components that are curriculum.
Don't worry, they're not going to share this with us. Right. Just a formative assessment.
This is for instructors.
Is this a test?
This is a formative assessment.
A what?
A formative assessment. And you can work together. Yes.
Collaboration is valued.
It really didn't need your permission.
Okay, all right.
It is one of our four Cs.
Close.
Not correct.
Not perfect. It's a hard question.
You both missed the same one.
It's just a formative assessment, which will inform our instruction. We do want you to actually circle or check. You can keep it. You guys done?
Yep.
We're doing it by initial now. It's a choice, choice district, so.
Exactly, exactly. Now, this is a K-12 definition of curriculum. Is this considered?
Yes.
K-12.
Yes. Are you yellow? Are you the yellow?
I'm not done yet.
Okay. Do we feel comfortable? Okay.
Don't worry, we're going to come back and revisit.
Are we ready to move forward? Okay, so we wanted to do a formative assessment because a formative assessment then tells us, gives us data as to where we need to go with our instruction. So we were trying to model for you one of the things that we believe in here in Douglas County. So what we want to go to next is what is Douglas County's curriculum or our guaranteed and viable curriculum, which we refer to as the GVCs. And it is comprised of our world-class outcomes, which would be like standards, but ours are more rigorous. The 21st century skills, which some of you circled skills on your sheet, 21st century skills, the four Cs, which would equate to the board ends, the four Cs, and then finally the content. So this is how we define curriculum here in Douglas County, our guaranteed and viable curriculum. Some of the other things that some of you circled, those would be a vehicle in which to teach these things. So if you had, let's say you circled textbooks, that's one resource you could use, obviously to help you teach content, 21st century skills, outcomes, and the four Cs. You might have circled supplemental materials. That again is a resource that we use as a vehicle to teach those four things.
So curriculum is the ends.
Yes. Does that make sense? Any questions on that? Okay, so what I'm going to do for you next is we're going to look at a Colorado academic standard, and we're going to deconstruct it to really figure out what that standard is asking. So here's one we took from English Language Arts. I'm not going to read it, but I'll give you time to read it, and then we're going to deconstruct it. Forbidding got an idea of it. So here's how we're going to deconstruct it. What skills are required to master this standard and what knowledge is required to master this standard? So we're going to say skills are the verbs, and if you look at your table, you have a sheet of Bloom's taxonomy with verbs. It looks like this. So some of you might be familiar with this. This is the cognitive complexity. So you start at remembering what verbs are required to remember, and you move all the way up to the highest complexity of create, what verbs are required to do those skills. So we're going to be referencing that sheet when we do this. So skills are verbs. When I say verbs, I mean blooms. And then knowledge, nouns. So when we look at this standard and I say introduce a topic or text clearly, what skills are required to introduce a topic or text clearly? What verbs on Bloom's to introduce?
Translate.
To introduce a topic?
Yeah, because you've got to take the information, you've got to be able to concisely state what you're going to tell people, and then go through the rest of telling them.
Well, I'm going to make it even more simplified. So just simply introducing something. What skills? Explain. I heard, did I hear tell? Tell?
Show.
Show? What else? Select? Anything else?
Name.
Name? Okay, so these are some of the skills that are required when we introduce a topic or text. What is some knowledge required to introduce a topic or text? And we're thinking nouns now.
Resources?
Say that again.
Resources.
You have to have some resources. Is that what you're saying? Other nouns, knowledge you would need to introduce a topic or text clearly. Familiarity?
You would need a topic.
Topic. That would be good. Facts?
Data.
Anything else? So now let's move on to the next piece. To state an opinion, what skills do you need? Verbs. I'm stating an opinion.
Tell.
Tell.
Explain.
Explain. Show? All right.
Infer.
To state an opinion?
I guess to form it.
To form it?
Yeah.
Okay. Select. Okay. How about knowledge to state an opinion?
Hopefully.
Hopefully you have knowledge of that.
Right. So I can put knowledge of that, but not necessarily. What else? Right. Wrong right. What other knowledge would you have to have to state an opinion?
Alternatives.
Possible alternatives? Okay. And then finally, create an organizational structure in which ideas are logically grouped to support the writer's purpose. What skills do you need to do that, to create an organizational structure where your ideas are logically grouped to support the writer's purpose?
Here's Captain Obvious, organize.
Okay.
Compare.
Okay. How about knowledge?
I don't want to illustrate on.
Oh, okay, illustrate, sorry. What knowledge do you need?
Writer's purpose.
Right. Know the writer's purpose. What else?
Connections.
Connections? Anything around organizational structure?
I have logic.
Logic? Okay, so what do you notice so far about the skills when you look at these and you look at Bloom's taxonomy?
They're in groups one, two, and a couple in three.
So what was one of our highest ones?
Organize.
And where did that fall on Bloom's?
Three.
Three, which is applied. So Matt's going to go through a sample assessment, and then when we deconstruct a world-class outcome, I want you to compare and contrast the two.
Okay, before we get started with the assessment, what I'd like you to do is on the Bloom's list, I'd like you to find these words and circle them or put a star by them, identify these in Bloom's list so we have a reference point for when we start looking at the assessment. Okay, in your materials, I have a sample of two different assessment items where the standard is listed at the top. So the standard is listed at the top, and we're going to go through these two items. There are two different varieties. One is your standardized test item where you pick an answer. The other one is more open-ended. The assessment items are designed to assess these skills, and so we're going to try to link the assessment item with the particular skill that's listed. So we're going to start with one at a time. We'll do sample one. I'd like you to read the passage at the top of sample one. It's numbered one and two, and it starts when most people think of ivory. Now, in the box directly below is the actual prompt for students. It says choose a sentence that should begin the passage, and it gives you a multiple choice of A, B, C, and D. Not so much interested that you answer the question. What we want to do is we want to analyze the question itself. So in your groups and in your pairs or your triads, I'd like you to discuss where you think this assessment item fits in terms of the skill. Which skill do you think this assessment item is really trying to get after based on the list that we generated earlier?
Are they counting one and two as the passage?
Yep. Paragraph one and paragraph two.
If you want to call us that, the paragraph.
No, I cut and pasted this off a whole sampling, and so I had to just chop it off.
You can, you can, because it's here too.
Turn those on, Nona.
Are we talking? Or you can hear?
What do you guys think?
Turn that off, Nona.
Do you know how to do that?
It starts with, prevent, it starts with, to formulate a question, access information, contrast, and form an opinion on very simple things. Right, but it gets more complex as far as the data you.
Interpret.
I wouldn't say it's very high on here. Yeah.
What did you think it was on here? Understanding, maybe?
She told me it would be.
Well, he had explained. I think that's.
I thought maybe apply, maybe.
Have you guys rested on?
That's pretty high.
I mean, you don't actually have to do any of those things. If you're just reading those four answers and realizing that, like Dr. Gose said, it's ridiculous.
Or is pick on there? Because you could choose and not be right.
Okay. Perfect. Can we get it down to two zones? That's really good.
Well, if you assume this is true, these two things are true.
No.
Google, Google the answer. The other thing is, can you Google the answer to that?
Sort of. The sentence should begin the passage. So if it was. Well, if some of them aren't true, we'll go tell you that.
Right. That could tell you it wasn't true.
Okay. We may not land on one specific area, but let's just talk about the region of bloom. If you were to say what level of bloom this particular item gets at, what level, what would you say, just as, and it could fall to more than one, but generally speaking, where do you think it falls?
Understanding.
Understand.
We have two. Understanding is what level?
Two.
Two? Two? Did you guys pick?
You know, I was going, the word I chose was infer, because I think you had to infer that ivory came from elephants, and that was a major source of, elephant were a major source. So I was, after Dana pointed out, I was somewhere two or four where infer is both used. Probably two is the better one, I would agree.
Okay, perfect.
And the other piece of this is engagement, because we know all kids want to read about elephant tusks and ivory. So we'll talk about that when we get to the performance task piece.
Okay, so that one represented more of your standardized multiple choice item. Let's turn our attention to the bottom one, which is the writing task. We're going to do the same thing. I'd like you to read the item and then look at your Bloom's taxonomy to see if you can figure out where you think this item is. And if you can't lock onto one zone, you can pick two. What two levels of Bloom's do you think it hits?
Who's Bud?
Who's Bud?
Too abstract for me.
Don't worry about Bud. Just look at what they're asking you to do.
You saw it from out here, right? Choose.
Does Bud make that decision in this or if I change this? Not necessarily, because you just have to read the book or the passage. And then choose, I mean, it says, I mean, they tell them there's several important turning points. It's not like they have to figure that out. So they're just saying, what's one of the turning points, and how does it change the story? So they're just asking them to, you know, sort of figure that out, which is below level, identifying.
She said we could collaborate.
That's right.
Yes.
You can collaborate.
It's not a problem. You don't have to work individually.
Okay, so let's look at the bottom one, this writing task. Again, based on the verbs that are in there and Bloom's taxonomy, where do you think it approximately fits on the levels? Number five? Five?
Understanding.
Okay, we have a low on this side.
So you think evaluate, evaluate, understand? What part of it do you feel sell in the evaluation level?
You have to explain and justify, choose, decide. You're taking the passage and actually doing another step with it to explain, but providing an opinion why it's important to the development of the plot. So it wasn't just pulling it out of it. You now had to formulate your own next level of what that change did for you.
Did you want to add to?
Well, we also had opinion and support, so the kids are required to support their entire hypothesis here, putting forward an opinion, and then how do you back that up?
I thought the opinion was the important, I think you were.
The opinion part's what ramped it up for you?
I think so.
How about, Craig?
I thought it was largely repackaging, to some extent, the reading. The opinion piece does push it up a little bit, but it's an opinion about what? Why the scene is important. Why the scene is important, not what the reader thinks. So, about, about the passage, so it's sort of, it's important. The opinion is about the importance of the passage to the, to the overall text.
So you felt it was a little more recall?
Right.
Having to form their own?
And, and, and sort of regurgitation of, of the text.
Okay.
Not a high order.
Right, because one of the things that I think lowers it is that the prompt tells the students that there are turning points, and they're important. They don't have to construct that on their own. So they just literally have to find a turning point, and then tell why they, why it's important, which is lower level than had they come up with that idea on their own.
Right.
That's what I say.
Let me, yeah, let me explore this a little bit. So it's the, it's the asking for the turning point in the question that lowers the question?
If they're given the turning points, as opposed to having to go find them themselves and do the research, then they're really just choosing a turning point, and then just saying why they think.
Well, perhaps I'm misreading.
Telling them what they were, it's saying, go, it's saying that they exist.
Right.
Yeah, perhaps I'm misreading the question, and that's the problem. It said there are several important turning points, which Bud makes a decision that changes the course of the story. So they've got to find the turning points, they've got to choose one, they've got to explain what happened, and then they need to provide their opinion about why that turning point is important in the development of plot, and then cite evidence to support that opinion.
The only hint I saw was that they, they exist. Okay, but they have to do the rest, didn't they?
But is that interpreting, or is that formula? I think that's where you get on whether or not this is at the far right. Because establishing an opinion on something could be the highest level that you could achieve. But it's also, if all I'm doing is picking out data points that says now this informs my opinion, then that's interpreting. So I think that's, I think that's what we're talking about. If which of those two is this?
Great conversation.
We'll take it up and peel.
Okay, so one of the things that, that comes with this is, there's an obvious difference between the two items. One is simply having you choose, and one's having you formulate something. So the difference between the first one and the second one, obviously, is just in the, the sample itself. If you're just choosing an answer that's already available, that's a lot different than formulating something on your own. So the last one, there is some debate in, in terms of how high it is. But I think consensus wise, we wouldn't put this at the very far right. I think that's pretty much consensus. There may be argument about what level it falls below, but we see that it's not at the far right of this. So the standard is outlining skills that are lower level skills, which necessitates the assessment to be at that same low level, because it's assessing those low level skills. They tend to agree. We're gonna move on to doing an outcome with the same process, deconstructing an outcome, looking at an assessment item, and we're gonna look at the correlation between the two.
Matt, before we move on, is it, is it a fair question to assume or infer that both of those questions measure the standard that we first started with?
That is debatable. I think portions of the first one measure portions of the standard. This standard is pretty big, in terms of all the different skills that it assesses. And so it's a wide range of skills that are pretty low level, but it's a wide range of skills. So this particular standard is often embedded in other questions. It's a secondary standard. So that is the trick behind this one.
It would also be very hard on that first sample assessment, because you're picking out of the multiple choice to assess just that question, that large standard.
Okay, so this is one of the parts that you hear quite a bit, is the idea of a balanced assessment system. You hear that a lot in a lot of our terminology, in our strategic plan. You hear it a lot in our planning. The idea of a balanced assessment approach. What that is, it's, it's a variety of assessments that we use to inform our instruction. So there are three basic types that we use. The first one we talked about earlier, which is that formative, that's what we started with. That was the idea of us checking in and having an assessment that informs our instruction. It tells us where we're taking our instruction. That can be very formal, or it could be informal. It could be something as simple as a question and answer session between a teacher and a student, or it could be something as formal as writing it down and recording it. The next level is an interim. And what the interim does is it benchmarks their learning towards progress of some goal. There are benchmark assessments that measure a progress towards some final goal, and that's what our interims are. The summative is at the end of the instruction. This is after we've done all of our teaching. It's a bigger assessment, and it assesses learning after it's already occurred. This is right at the end, it could be the end of the year or end of the unit. This is an assessment to see how the student's learning has at the conclusion of some instructional time. So when you hear those words about a balanced assessment approach, and these different types of assessments, this is how they all fit in together. And we really strive to have all three of these as part of our instruction. We want formative, we want interim, we want summative, because we want a balanced picture of the learning that a student does. We want a body of evidence, not just a snapshot of a test. We want a body of different assessment types and a body of evidence to really inform what the student knows and what the student does not know. So it's very important that we have that common language.
I just have a question about that. So is the, is the organizing principle for those three categories temporal? Or is there some, in other words, beginning, middle, and end? Or is there some other aspect of, of, of those phases of, of assessment that the word temporal doesn't capture?
Well, when you look at kind of the grand scheme of assessment, the summative typically is benchmark at the end, and formative is continuous throughout. The interim could fall anywhere between the beginning of your unit and the end. It doesn't necessarily have to be exactly in the middle. It's wherever the students, you feel like they're ready to benchmark their learning. So it could be close to the end, or it could be closer to the middle, it just depends. But you're right, it kind of follows that same process. But formative is always a continual process. I mean, teachers do this every day, all day, when they're teaching students. Whether it's just a raise of hands, or it's a quiz, or it's an assignment. They're constantly using formative assessment to guide their instruction.
Any other questions? So next, we're gonna move on to deconstructing a world-class outcome. So one of the outcomes we have here is justify how perspective is a catalyst for change. So we're gonna use the same process we did with the standard, but now we're gonna do it with one of Douglas County School District world-class outcomes. So what skills are required? We're gonna do verbs and nouns again, and we're gonna use Bloom's. What skills are required for a person to be able to justify how their perspective is a catalyst for change? What skills are required? Justify, yes, that's a good one.
Decide.
Decide. Defend?
Compare.
Compare. Compare? Did I hear one over here?
Perceive.
Perceive, is that what you said?
Yep.
Okay.
Predict.
Any others?
Evaluate.
Evaluate?
Imagine.
Imagine? Others?
Elaborate.
Elaborate? Okay, so how about nouns? What knowledge is required to justify how perspective is a catalyst for change? What knowledge is required or necessary?
You gotta know what the current status is.
You might need to know historical knowledge.
Just one minute.
Federal reference?
Preferred outcome.
Outcome. Yeah, that's good.
Preferred outcome, is that what you said?
Possible adverse outcome.
I'm sorry.
Possible adverse outcome.
Adverse outcome. Okay.
What do you say?
He goes to a pessimist.
So, here's what I want to point out. What, first of all, I want you to talk for a few minutes at your table. What content area do you think I took this outcome from?
This is a Douglas County world-class outcome from one of our content areas. Which content area do you think it is? Math, social studies, science?
What content area do you think I took this outcome from? Did I take it from science, did I take it from social studies, math?
Social studies.
English? Humanities?
Chemistry.
Interesting, interesting.
So does everybody have an idea in their, so I want to go back for a minute. Do we know what content area this is from?
You said language arts.
When you say writer's purpose, probably we can infer that it's language arts. Okay, what's your guess on this one?
My first one was history.
History, okay.
We had several.
Go ahead.
Depending on your meaning of catalyst and change and perspective. It could be social studies of some kind, but it could also be science or math, or even English language arts.
Okay. About the statements.
Chemistry?
Chemistry?
I said social studies.
Social studies. Okay, I took this from our English Language Arts world-class outcomes. So if you look, you, I gave you a copy, you can find these online. This is an example of what our GVC, Guaranteed Viable Curriculum, looks like online. And those are outcomes for English Language Arts for fifth grade. For fifth grade. The other one we chose was.
We're playing already smarter than the fifth grade.
This was a fifth grade English Language Arts standard. Yes. So my question to you is, what do you notice about these skills? If I could draw an arrow to these, in terms of Bloom's?
These are higher order.
So for fifth grade, we're asking a fifth grade student to work in what cognitive level on Bloom's? The highest, the highest level. What do you notice about art, this knowledge?
Good.
Versus this knowledge?
The statements are all down there. And you're coming going to do, that's why we're not using them.
This is very rote, going and finding resource or information. There's a lot of inference and a lot of explaining thought that has to go into this one.
Right, so we're not saying we don't want people to use content as a vehicle to teach the outcome. What we're saying is that content could look very different depending on how you want to teach the outcome. So even though it's in English Language Arts, I can use it in chemistry. I can use it in social studies, I can use it in math, I can use it in many different areas. This one, pretty specific to English Language Arts, because we're talking about writer's purpose. So traditionally, when you talk about the industrial age, we spend a lot of time on knowledge, hopefully getting some skill acquisition. Shifting to high cognitive complexity skill acquisition, with this as the vehicle to attain that. Does that make sense? Any questions about that?
So Dana, could you talk about, we only got to look at one Colorado academic standard, but you guys looked at all of those and all the Common Core. Can you talk about what was the body of evidence generated on all of those standards?
In most areas, I would say high school, there were a few that hit evaluate, but in most areas, the highest it was asking of students was application, the highest. So we brought hundreds of teachers together, and we said, look, we want our kids to have higher outcomes, so we're gonna build our outcomes at the top three levels of Bloom's, the lowest being analyze. So that's how we, the teachers came together, they looked at the Colorado academic standards. Now how do we up the ante, so to speak? And we built them based on the top three levels of Bloom's. So why don't you show them a sample assessment?
So we're gonna turn our attention to a sample. This is a writing prompt for this particular outcome. So I'm gonna give you a few minutes to read it. So I have two questions. The first question is related back to the standards. What level of Bloom do you think this question falls on? And what do you think this question is really assessing? So in your groups, I'd like you to discuss that. What level first? Is it on Bloom's? And really, what are we assessing in this question? What is it assessing?
It could be. They might change the prompt from current issue to, you know, an issue in your community or something less. Well, they try to let them, they want to say. Assessments be as authentic as possible. So if a student's been working on a project to build a soapbox derby cart making site, they would want them to write about that, you know, so that it's authentic. So they would, they would open, they try to open up for these assessments to make them mentally performance based, where you actually have to do it. You can't say this is how we do it, you have to actually do it.
The middle order.
The highest level of assessment for us is if it's authentic.
The real important is to do these highest level.
Meaning it relates to something for real for the students. So it might be, we have middle school kids working on kind of Google science fair projects, and they can be anything they want. Some kids will earn better helmets for football players, some kids work on various other things. And some bad sports. You know, they would want them to use that authentic topic, and then justify how a change in perspective catalyzed change.
Well, yeah, I advocate the closest work from influence, which is on fire.
That's cool, does it work?
I advocate the closest work from influence, which is on fire.
What is an assessment?
It's more, more specific. It's going to be a per-.
Critical thinking conversation. Are you talking about content area or are you talking about skills?
No, okay, so, I think, oh, so you start out.
Absolutely.
I mean, you could, it has a little bit of everything. So ultimately what you're doing is this, this is ultimately what you're doing. But it, confusing to play into it.
It's worth it though.
Like, it, it's not much here. You're, you're, I mean, if you're just doing this, why is it a test question? You're remembering what you remember. You're understanding enough to do all this.
All these are standard.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Conventional goal is really strong.
I think you are.
It has.
Okay, so, let's talk about blooms level. Let's do this first. Where do you think this particular item falls on bloom? What level? There's a lot of different levels here, but what level do you think really describes where this item is? Six. Six?
Five and six.
Five and six? Five?
We have a difference of opinion, so I don't want to-
Well, we're still, we're still talking it out, but we weren't sure whether it was five or six.
Okay, so we're hovering around five or six and, on all accounts.
I would argue five.
Okay. Explain why you think it would live in five.
I think, I don't think it, because we're kind of, then, then the whole conversation for us got into, okay, how do these work together? Then you step on top of each other and you kind of build on things. And I just don't know that it hits the final part. I think what you, what you've asked them to do is identify something that's out there. Examine and analyze, you know, the, take a look at it and provide some context for, for the issue. But then you choose one side or the other. You don't, you don't, you're not creating an alternative solution. You're not saying, choose one side, the other, or make up your own about what the perfect world looks like. You're saying you have two options, choose one or the other.
Okay, very good.
See, at our table, what we saw is the beginning of it started with, we took the verbs and then decided what category. So we saw mainly fours and fives in the first half of the narrative. But the last three we thought were, you know, a five and two sixes. So it actually progressed. It actually started with, begin with some of this applying and analyzing, but finish, your, your final outcome was, develop an argument, justify your position, and propose a change. And I think those are mostly level six skills or outcomes that we're trying to find.
And that's interesting that it starts out lower and it gradually builds. So students have an open access to it. You open the door for more kids to start the question, to stretch their thinking in this item. One other thing that goes with this is, if you compare this item with the other two that we had, now we have voice and choice. Because in that first part, is they're choosing what issue. As opposed to the previous ones where it's given to them. They have a passage or they have two sentences. They, they have no choice. So now the kid can grab something that they're passionate about. And so now you have voice and choice. So whatever topic they pick, it could be as diverse as their interests. What we're trying to get at in the assessment is we're looking specifically at the skills. You choose whatever you want, but we're still going to measure what you're attaining at this high level of skill. Pick the topic that you're passionate about, but we're going to assess you at the highest level of bloom. We want to get you to that upper level. And because it's passionate for you, you're going to get that by you. So this item provides that avenue where the other two did not. So, going back to her original question, is what specific subject area could this fit in? Well, she said social studies, but what other content areas could this prompt even be part of? What are some other areas besides social studies?
Could be a bioethics or, or, be a biology or a, an ethics question in a biology class, I could see that applying.
Perfect, so we have a science connection. Other areas that we could possibly just take this prompt and put it into a different class.
What played around, what's your best offensive play?
Oh, yes.
It's a physical education.
Yes, a physical education connection.
What if we really, to make it even more open, took out current and political? Then what content could you see it in? Just pick an issue.
Well, I think that's, I, that was fascinating to me is the language becomes a limiter. And just like Doug said, I didn't even see that. We were talking about that over here, about the current political issue became a limiter on what this could be. And when Doug said, "Pick one or side or the other," that's also a limiter. And so you've got to give enough information to convey the intent of your question, but you don't want to get so much that you, you actually limit what kids could potentially come up with.
Right. Because propose the change is the create.
Right.
Right? Come up with something original. Take all this knowledge, synthesize it, and now invent something different. So I agree with you, take out, choose a side, take out this particular topic. Just choose an issue, propose a change.
So when looking at that, looking at the standard we chose for ELA and the sample assessments, and then this world-class outcome and this sample assessment for fifth grade, which requires more cognitive complexity? Which one?
Okay, so I have a, a question about how these higher things on Bloom's taxonomy fit in with the lower ones and when and where we, we teach those lower ones. I mean, I understand you can be creative without saying, I don't know, being good at math or understanding, really understanding spatial relations. But in order to be, I guess, successfully creative, to come out eventually with something that's maybe a real thing, you have to have those basic building blocks, those skills, that knowledge. So how and when, you know, I mean, again, you know, Bloom's taxonomy is, is, you know, the, the triangle, things build on each other. I understand that we're trying to flip that, but at what point do we say, you know, you really have to have those, those lower skills so that you can truly be successful when you move on to those upper skills?
Well, if we go back to this idea, this is where the assessment component becomes critical. That as we, as we teach, we have to constantly monitor where students are at in their skill development. So that's where formative assessment becomes key. Because you're absolutely right, we have to know that they understand and are able to do those skills that are low before we can get them to the high-level skills. So that's where the art of, and the science behind formative assessment-
I was going to say the same thing.
Comes in.
And the differentiation for students. So, how do we scaffold for some students who maybe need more of that versus those that are already here and I need to push them forward?
Right, right, and so you can presumably do that with a similar question, but you're taking where they are-
Yes.
Into account as you're evaluating them and as you're moving them, them forward.
So, from my perspective as an assessment person, I'm looking at the data. And from Dana's point of view, from the instructional point of view, she's looking at those strategies that help bring the kids up, the differentiation. Both play an equal role.
The question I'll say that parallel or piggybacks off of Judy's comment is, are we assuming in Bloom's taxonomy that if you're in those higher-level things, we're assuming the lower skills are also happening to get there, right? I mean, you don't-
You can't, right.
Create without being able to-
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
That's why the question built on it. So, and the other thing is, teachers then, depending on, if I, if I'm teaching this in English Language Arts, I probably have some other materials in the content part of our curriculum that are the vehicle for this. And if, if they're completely wrong in their, if they analyze but the information is wrong, I'm going to call that out. So, you still have to have all the four components. You know, they can't just create something.
Right, so, and able to do these, you have to have those, you have to have the ability to do the others. But what we're saying is, okay, these are all the skills required to do this one outcome. You're going to have students all over the continuum of blooms. And so how do you support each one of those kids?
It also true that this is an iterative, this is, you know, a never-ending process. And there's a simultaneity between learning and these higher-order activities. So, in fact, they feed on one another.
Right.
I mean, if you are creating and you are imagining, it's causing you neurologically to learn. Because you're, you're more motivated to retain that than if it's, you're just being sit-and-get lecturer, right?
Right.
So, so it's, 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 I, I agree, there's some sequence to this, but there's also a simultaneity to it that's reinforcing. And if it's done over and over.
Right, right, it can be done by deconstruction or, you don't have to start here to get, it's not linear necessarily.
But if you are imagining and creating, like, we had students who were at one of our middle schools working on what they felt would be a better helmet design.
Right.
And because of that, they were going out and learning all kinds of things-
Exactly.
That the teacher didn't actually plan for them to learn, but they wanted to know because they needed it for this. So they were learning science and they were learning history of football, all these things.
A, a, as opposed to having some upfront crash course in the physics of helmet design in a lecture sort of mode. And so, that, that's one of the things that I, I'm intrigued by, that concept of this constant simultaneous learning and creating, that, that, the, the data, the research suggests actually causes children authentically learn and to retain that knowledge for the rest of their lives-
Right.
As opposed to-
We're talking 40-year retention here.
Right, right.
So you go right into the next slide of, this is sort of our stage three, we have three stages that we plan. So we talk about teaching and learning opportunities, and the one thing that we really focus on is that alignment piece. So if our assessments are asking kids to perform at high cognitive levels, we have to make sure as instructors that we give them opportunities to practice at some of the, it doesn't, not every activity has to be, but they do have to have opportunities to practice at those high levels in order for them to be able to master the assessment at a high level as well.
And I, I like sports analogies because they're practical and a lot of people understand them. But in the case of providing learning opportunities, it's kind of like baseball. If you're out there playing and you play catch with somebody and then you have them hit the ball, and then you have them do some fielding, and then you have them do some pitching, you don't really know if they're a good baseball player until you put them on the field and actually play the game. So the learning opportunities have to match what you expect the kids to do. You can't just teach them the individual skills and know if they're going to be good baseball players without putting them on the field. And I really think that this is what that speaks to, is providing them the opportunities to actually perform, to do with the knowledge, to play baseball, as it were.
The other question I want to ask very quickly before we move on is, the other thing that we want to do, so the justifying, the how perspective is a catalyst for change, we wanted to make sure that when we develop these outcomes, that they could be transferable to any discipline, any content area. So if, and a fifth-grade teacher decides, you know what, I have this great idea when I'm doing social studies, I want to use that outcome in English Language Arts about justifying how perspective is a catalyst for change. We wanted to have that, the ability for them to be cross-curricular. And so we're finding a lot of teachers are saying, you know, especially secondary, so this might be my content area, I teach chemistry, but I really like this math outcome over here. And so I'm going to use it because it's not so specific in terms of content that they have that ability. And it provides the students with multiple perspectives when they get it in multiple disciplines. Do you want to do Inspired Ed?
Hmm?
Okay.
So, I'm going to show a demonstration of the Inspired Innovation software. And I'm going to look at just the two components of unit builder and the assessment library. Those are two very important components for our teachers. The unit builder helps teachers build their units of instruction. And the assessment part is how they upload their information and generate their assessment data.
So an important part of this, why Matt's getting that ready, is, as we started down this pathway with teachers, we realized that we were doing everything on paper, or Google Docs at best. And, so we started to try to go through the procurement process to buy a, a learning management system, an assessment management system, these pieces and parts. And after going through almost years of reviewing vendors, et cetera, we had lots of choices that did things we didn't need them to do and failed to do things we did need them to do. So, Inspired Innovation was built to support teachers in all of the work we've just talked about. To house the curriculum, to help them build units, to house assessments, to help them collect student data in a body of evidence. So, take it away, Matt.
Okay. Two components, there are multiple other components, but the two that we're going to focus in on today are the unit builder and the assessment library. The unit builder is the system that teachers can use to build their units of instruction. So, rather than create one from scratch, I've got a couple of samples here that we can look at. So, I'm going to edit. So, go ahead.
This is the overview for if a teacher decides to put their units in here, they can give it a title, short description, and then they can choose the grade level in which they're working at. This is the overview before they get into stage one. And our planning is about three stages. Stage one is outcomes, two is assessment, and then three is instructional planning. So then as they get into the outcome piece of stage one, they have the ability to choose a grade level. And then when they choose a grade level, outcomes are produced, a content area, yeah. Pick your favorite subject.
Every time.
Outcomes appear down here. So they can go in and decide which outcome they want to choose, or outcomes. And then that populates into their stage one of the unit planner. They also can choose a 21st century skill. And those, example of those are on the example of the GVC. So let's say financial literacy, since you're picking math. Oh. Is it not working?
No, it isn't.
Take the skill off.
I'm going to take the skill off.
Okay.
Because those are optional.
There you go. So then you can go into, into any one of these outcomes, choose it, and it populates into your stage one. It also is tagged to standards that align, so they know that, so then it pops up there. So let's say you're going to choose those two outcomes for your unit. Then as you go into stage two, this is where you start housing your assessments and choosing your assessments that align to those two outcomes. And notice that stays open and visible so that you can align your assessments to those outcomes. And I'll let you go ahead and explain stage two.
Yeah, so this, this part of the unit builder allows people to identify what their assessments are. It's not where they build them, it's where they identify them. So this is the part of the units, just like your unit planner, you don't necessarily build your assessments in the unit planner. It's just your plan. This is how they go through and they can identify what the assessment title is. If it's an external source, they can do the URL, or they can download the file into it. So it's all housed in the same location, which is really important. So it's, it's right there, ready for teachers to be able to use.
Do you want to do the formative some? Oh, yeah, sure. The, the outcomes with the standards?
Right here?
Yep. So there's the standards pegged to that one particular outcome. And that is, teachers can view that for every outcome that we, that we have. And then all the while you're building this, your formative interim and summative assessments are view, are in view so that you can make sure that you're constantly aligning.
So, right now in my unit, because this is a test unit, on the left, it tells me, well, I don't have any formative, I don't have any interim, and I don't have any summative. But as I build it and I add these assessments, it's going to keep track of that for me. So that I know that I'm, I have enough information to really guide my instruction. If I look and I see, you know what, I have lots of formative, I have a summative, but I don't have a single interim, I can look back and I can go back and add that later so that I have the full continuum of assessments.
What is, are we going to do stage three and then the calculator?
Yes.
Okay. So then in stage three, can you type something in because I want to see, I want them to see the student-teacher view?
That's just the header.
Nope.
So as you go to stage three, when you put in your activities that you're going to have for your student, it will come up either student or teacher. So is it what I'm doing or is it what the student is doing? So that way, it reminds me as an instructor, am I providing enough opportunity- So that way, it reminds me as an instructor, am I providing enough opportunities for academic rigor for my students? Are they doing hands-on versus some other type of learning? And then what am I doing as a, as an instructor? Because I want to make sure that what I'm doing is aligning with what I'm asking the kids to do. Right, so who's doing the work? So I'm going to describe my activity, is it me doing it, is the teacher doing it? And then I can put any type of resources I want to refer to in my unit. So that, the teacher-student piece, we thought that was really important because I know when I'm planning professional development for people, I want to make sure that if I'm asking you to do a rigorous task, that I should probably not be doing a low-level task as a teacher. The two have to match.
And as you go through the process, it keeps track of which outcomes and which skills you're highlighting? So that's always with you as you're developing your activities in Stage Three.
At the top, yep.
Can I add a little bit-
Sure.
...
Sure.
If you have a defined course, just pick one for me.
Chemistry.
All right. So how many of these units need to be built for that class? And what are the assessments, how many assessments of separate types will be applied to that class?
So it depends because the teacher gets to decide how many units. So we, we provide them with the outcomes for chemistry, and then they take those outcomes and they design units around them. And different teachers do different numbers. And every unit has to have the assessments that align to the outcomes they have chosen for that unit. So some teachers have a lot, and other teachers have, you know, five or six for the entire year.
But you've already told them what assessments you expect. Doesn't that then define how many units they have to design to meet those assessments?
No, because some of the assessments they get to design. So there's flexibility. Matt's going to show you the calculator.
So what you tell them is a minimum?
Yes. But Matt's going to show you the calculator, and the other component of this is the Site Six piece, which is where they have to have a body of, of data.
Can I just ask one?
Mm-hmm.
Tests, I understand.
Mm-hmm.
Give me some other examples of assessments for the chemistry course.
So-
Labs.
Right, exactly.
Labs could be, this is where I need Eric Proudie. They might have some type of performance assessment where they have to go do, now you're science, so correct me if I'm wrong, but test soil is part of an assessment.
Yeah, probably not in chemistry, but yeah, they-
Okay, it's chemistry.
So for instance, you know, if, if they're studying the way that the periodic table is constructed, and you know, when I went to school, we memorized the elements and, you know, all these attributes of them, right?
Do you need to, I hope?
Well, we still do that, but we do it differently. So instead, we want them to construct knowledge by testing various elements, elements across the periodic table for various properties, and then to organize them according to those properties, whether it be melting point, boiling point, the electron configuration, the color that they burn. I mean, we've done all these things. But we want them to have more knowledge and skill beyond just, oh, these are these elements, and this is the family they're in. And so I might give students an element and have them do multiple tests on it and predict which family it would be in and why. Which would be a much more, it's a higher cognitive request than, here's a blank periodic table, fill it out. Which is what I, I did one of those when I was in high school. So, so I'm just giving that as an example where here's an element, you go do tests, you come back and tell me what you think you have and why you think you have that.
And how much, how much, take the chemistry example for high school chemistry course. Just curious, how much time does a teacher need to, to construct these units and plan this course as opposed to the old days where it was kind of handed to you in a notebook?
Well, I mean, yes and no. I mean, we all, I remember I was handed the textbook, and here's, you know, teach this textbook, but you still had to build lesson plans for each week. And I remember there was the carbon paper, and then we'd rip out one copy and put it in the principal's mailbox. So they, they wanted to visit our classroom, they knew what we were working on each day. So you've always, as a teacher, built lesson plans or units, whatever you want to call them, where you sort of chart out, here are the things, the knowledge and the skills I'm going to cover, and here's how I'm going to do it, and here's when the test is. And so that's not new. We're just asking to take it to a higher cognitive level so it's not as much memorization, regurgitation, but it's more active participation of students at a higher cognitive level so that they're using that knowledge to do something. And so that's the shift. And the textbook generally doesn't give you, doesn't give that to you, which is why we've built really robust professional development to help teachers with this. Some teachers have naturally been inclined in this way anyway, particularly in this district, so they've been teaching really high level. Others are working their way from, from where they were to a higher level of, of request for their students. But teachers in general have always planned. This is just a shift.
So the next part of the functionality actually goes to the assessment part that you were just talking about. This is a spot where they can, a teacher can create their own assessment library as to how they want to assess. So let's say chemistry. If they want to use your normal chemistry assessments that assess the periodic table, or if they want to do action research, where they actually have the kids out there doing research, or a lab, or other performances where they're actually demonstrating their knowledge, this is a place where they can actually upload and store those assessments. And there's an additional function to it. So let's say we want to add an assessment to our library. So I'll just call it Test Two, all the way through. So, and I'm going to say it's an internal assessment because I'm giving it, and I'm going to call it an interim, and it's at the classroom level because I want to do it. And I would obviously do more descriptions to it, so I would know as I go back what, what I'm actually looking for. The next part of this process is what's called the Assessment Calculator. It's a way for a teacher, or groups of teachers, to go through and look at their assessment to see how complicated, how good that assessment is. And we give them three basic criterias that they can do a self-assessment on that assessment. So they go through, and it provides them a rubric that they can figure out if this assessment is a good assessment or a poor assessment. So at the bottom, you see that there's a score that has a zero on it. As I answer the question, that score changes based on my responses. So the first one, if I go through, and I'm going to edit. So back here, this is everything that I want. I want to keep it the same. So I can look down here at the bottom, there are no outcomes for this assessment, and I can change that. That's something that I can add. And we can look at the three different categories for this particular assessment, and I can go through and look at each one independently. So I'm going to go through each of the different parts of that assessment. So there's performance classification, the quality, and the technical rigor. The first part is the performance classification. So how am I going to score this thing? Well, this particular one, I want to do percentages. So I'm going to say it's a scale of percentages. And am I going to use this to measure their achievement? Or am I going to use it to measure their growth as they progress through a unit? So I'm going to indicate, well, I want growth. And notice the score at the top has changed. It went from a zero to a three. So I'm starting to add scores to my assessment. So really what this does is it helps teachers review and evaluate their assessments so they can determine if that assessment really matches what they want to match with. Does it measure what I want to measure? Is it rigorous? Is it measuring an outcome? It allows them to go through and do a self-assessment of that particular test, or quiz, or lab, and it gives them a score on it. So it gives teachers the ability to review and evaluate their assessments prior to giving them to students. So, and there are a bunch of questions through here. I guess I could go through all of them, but I can just scroll down and let you look at a few of them. But if you look on the left, there's different classifications, different components. So there's a couple of questions on design, there's a couple of questions on learning outcomes. There are different questions that elicit different components of a, of an assessment. A real huge component is feedback. Are we providing students feedback on how they're progressing on this assessment? Are we giving them information as to how they're doing? And so this is what gets to the heart of that piece.
What are the E, I'll see if I can do-
These are evident, somewhat evident, not evident. So the E is telling us, yes, that's evident. And if you hover over each one of them, it tells you what each one of those things means. So it's a self-assessment for teachers when they're looking at their assessments.
One of the things we've talked about is having the opportunity for a peer to also score your assessment so that you can compare your score versus, and they already do that now. I mean, they sit together with this, and they go through it together. So this is just another opportunity. If they want to, if I don't have the same planning period as another chemistry teacher, I want to see what he or she thinks of my assessment, then I would be able to do sort of a peer review share. That teacher could score it without seeing my scores, and then I would get that data back.
So very valuable tool. And there are other functionalities to this, our professional development and site performance. I think you alluded to that already.
Right.
So there are different pieces, but that's-
So teachers can build a unit in here, and I've done this myself as a teacher to see what it's like, and submit it to their evaluator, tag it to standards and elements in site. Their evaluator can then give them feedback, which they immediately get. And then they can make changes, or they can leave it as is if they agree. Then the professional development module is smart. So if it sees that I am historically not as good on standard to assessment, then whenever there are professional development opportunities that are on standard to assessment, they'll populate in my particular professional development module, and I can just click on those to sign up for them.
So the evaluator doesn't necessarily need to be as familiar with the discipline as a teacher because of this tool?
Right. The evaluator can review the unit as it's created against the teacher evaluation rubrics. And they don't, you don't have to, I mean, I evaluated Russian teachers. I don't, I don't speak Russian, but I can evaluate their unit based on the criteria we've set for quality and using the assessment calculator and some of the other pieces.
And how were those criteria originally set?
The original criteria are based on, there's two things. One, they have to crosswalk to CDE's teacher evaluation rubric. But we started ours in January of 2009 with teachers from across the district. And over time, we had to merge toward the CDE piece, but we still maintained a lot of, of pieces that are unique to Douglas County which are based on the research and literature of what's best for students, and also some of Linda Darling-Hammond's work on what's best in teacher evaluation.
So the teachers played quite a role in, obviously, in developing these end-game assessment goals.
Right. We have 26 different ones for 26 different kinds of teachers. So art teachers have their own, counselors have their own, music teachers have their own. They developed those off the core one, which was crosswalked to the Colorado Department of Education, which we have to do, and they did the review of it to show that we'd done that. And we're very successful in that piece. So, and then we've done two summer updates. And Steve and Ted just got done with the second summer update. Do you guys want to talk about that for a minute as far as what that looked like and participation by people?
Sure. It was the process I think we brought forth a couple of months ago. Where over the summer, we brought in teachers and administrators from various grade levels, various schools. And they kind of came, I think, as bringing feedback from their colleagues as well to talk about what in our current site language needed to be clarified. We, one of the major changes was around the, what you saw today with the curriculum, actually calling out the four parts of our guaranteed viable curriculum. So was all teacher-led, teacher-driven, supported by the, by the DAB. And as we're training principals on that tool right now, the feedback we're getting so far is that they're, they're feeling they can give much, much more proactive feedback and more accurate feedback to teachers using that document.
So each summer, we do a review where teachers and principals come in and say, I was confused about this language. Could we straighten that out? And then it's reviewed by committees, and then all 26 are upgraded.
We've seen the hypothetical or illustrated construction of an assessment. Do we have any in the library, you know, a sample of one that's already constructed?
We, we talked about this. The problem with that is that we actually have those in the library to use. And so it's kind of like the test people make, releasing sample questions. We're in the same situation where all we really feel like we can release are sample questions. We can't release the real ones. So that's, so that's why you had a sample tonight. But Matt, do you want to add to that?
Yeah, and we'll be talking about the interim assessment in two weeks. We'll have some people from the design team to actually go through and, and talk about the interim assessment.
I mean, I was seeing, we have 20, 20 possible points on some kind of rubric of a development. It'd be interesting to see. Here's one that reaches a 20, here's a 15, here's a 10. Do we have any?
Oh, yes. And we've done the same scoring process with TCAP, and we've done it with those assessments as well. We have some of those in there, just not in my teacher mode.
Right. But I mean, that might be something at some point to get, to take this another step for the course.
We did this last year at the building level and used that, the assessment calculator as a tool during professional development with teachers and said, bring something. Why don't you just bring one? I don't care what you bring, bring one. And go through the rubric and just score it. And people said, well, what if it's a, a test that's come with a textbook? You know, that kind of, bring it, we'll score it too. And one of the things they found out was that those kind of tests that you got, like a college test where you, you take it as the end of unit kind of, or end of the course kind of test, you, you know, get on two weeks later and see your grade posted as, and I got an 84, and you don't know what you get. The tests that were, that were being used that way will score more poorly on this because there's no mechanism for feedback. There's not a way to demonstrate growth, things like that. And all of a sudden, teachers, you could see them going, wait a minute, I can make my test score better if I changed a couple of these processes. And it was really awesome to watch them go, well, I don't want to use this test, I want to do this and make it change. And they were completely fascinated by almost, not video gamish, but if I just change this one thing, I can get a 20 on my test instead of a 17. And so it was a little bit of the tail wagging the dog, but it was for the right reasons. And they were immediately, now they wanted to know, how do we get access to this calculator? And so we made that calculator available to them. Use it anytime you want. The idea is it's based in research as to why. Why would a growth model be more useful to a student than just an end-up course, 80%? You don't know what your feedback was, those kinds of discussions. And those started happening immediately, and it was like, okay, that makes a lot of sense. Instead of saying, we think you should do every test this way, we just said, here, use this, see how it works out.
Yep. I've been part of teacher conversations like that with a group of teachers where they joke with each other, you know, about, you know, this, this one's not even on the rubric, you know, and work together to move their collective assessment over in that way.
So why can't you tell us about a past construction of one of these?
Past construction?
Yep. Previous that is no longer germane to what's going on currently. I mean, you're worried about, I don't know, you're missing something there.
No, he didn't ask for past ones.
No, I just wanted to know if there were any.
He wanted to see current.
Instead of a hypothetical, we're trying to create one on the fly and we're more-
If you wanted to see how one was created.
If we have one available that was created.
We're going to do that in two weeks.
Why can't you do a past one?
Well, it didn't exist in the past. We only had the state ones.
Yeah.
All right.
And this functionality within Inspired Innovation's only been available for a few weeks.
Okay.
So there's going to be a larger number of them very soon as people get more accustomed to using it.
All right.
Any other questions? I just want to highlight on, before we wrap up, on the GVCs. If you ever want to go in and play with them, we have linked Sample and During Understandings. If teachers want to use ones that were teacher-created, they can still create their own. And we've also linked rubrics for the Four Seasons 21st Century Skills. We created with teachers the 21st Century Skill rubrics because they didn't exist yet. And then we took Ed Leader 21 rubrics, and for the grade levels that weren't represented, we created those as well. So they have links to all those rubrics, and then they can look at the outcomes either in a progression, horizontal, horizontal or vertical, if that helps them. So we've tried to include as many links as possible to provide them the resources they need when they're creating their units. Also, you have a white paper in your folder on how our curriculum was created if you ever want to take time to read that.
The other thing I wanted to add is you can't really see this by looking at one of the world-class outcomes, but the way that they're built is, is that they, they scaffold up over time on this PK through 12 progression. The complexity scales up as the student does, but they're not age-based. So kids can be wherever they are on the whole progression, PK through 12. wherever they are on the whole progression, PK through 12, at any time, and teachers know what the next step is. So Dana's going to show you, do you have a visual of that?
Yep.
Oh, good deal.
So I'm just going to do social studies.
So if you go to any one of these GVCs and you click on PK 12 world-class outcomes, maybe? Right, this is what you're referring to?
Mm-hmm.
So, we did grade spans, and so just to give a teacher a visual, this is what PK through 12 would look like with that one outcome and how it progresses in cognitive complexity. And then what we also wanted to provide them was how many standards are tagged to that particular outcome.
And so what Matt and Dana are working on right now that they didn't talk about is building, Doug's favorite word, rubrics, for all of these chunks that create a PK through 12 continuum of kindergarten at, on this outcome, and what high, middle, and low-level performance in kindergarten looks like on it, clear up to being a senior in high school, high, middle, and low performance. And those will actually all link so students can move through them as they grow on that particular outcome. It's not a great explanation, but I hope you get the idea. Any other questions?
That's a list, are they linked, so if you clicked on any one of them, they would take you to a word explanation of what that is?
You mean like which, what that actual-
SSO 9 grades, high school.
Translate it.
Those, if you're in Inspired Innovation, they're all live, so, right, if we give you a login there, you can click on that, and then the actual standard pops up.
Yep.
So teachers can say, "Okay, the comma is that standard." So as I'm teaching this high level, justify your perspective, I also want to, I want to infuse in there the comma, because that's something in fifth grade, I mean, I'm making this up, but you get the idea that that's how they infuse the content through it.
And then the other way they can view it, and this is sixth grade, social studies, they can go through and look at all the outcomes for sixth grade if they would like.
So all the different content areas?
Yep.
And we're actually in the process right now of preparing a grade level look for a parent, so that they can see what are the things that all sixth graders should know and be able to do when they finish sixth grade. And so every parent will receive the one, actually, I think they're going to send all into all, so everybody will have those, because even, I might have a sixth grader, but they might actually be performing on a seventh or eighth grade level in math or whatever. So where, do you know where we are in that process? I know Community Relations is working on the final draft.
Yes.
Okay. So there'll be a PDF, and they're also working on a hard copy version?
Yes.
Those should go out soon. And Dana, this is, you want to show everybody where this, the guaranteed viable curriculum is on the website, just in case anybody missed that and wants to, as you put it, play around with them?
I do. So if you go to A to Z, and then you go to the guaranteed and viable curriculum, it'll take you to what we have as GVCs, and then you can go in and hit any grade level. So if you want to look at elementary grade level, I'm going to click first grade, and then I want to go to English Language R's. And it will take me to that particular GVC. And like I said here, the rubric, so if I want to click on civic responsibility as a teacher, because I think I want to include that in my unit, this is the rubric for K2, this is second grade, I wonder if they're all linked. This is a rubric I can use in order to assess certain performance areas.
So they're all linked together?
Yes.
Any questions about any of this?
I don't want.
Okay, great. Cory and Steve, you guys ready to talk about the past, current, and future of concurrent enrollment? Okay. So I want to introduce Mr. Cory Wise, the Director of High Schools, and the person who really works closely with Dana on all things NCAA, concurrent enrollment, course descriptions, you name it.
All right, so obviously concurrent enrollment is a growing and great opportunity for all kids. So we started looking at that opportunity within our school district. It's a breakdown here. What I just pulled up right now quickly is last year to this year, what we offer in each school. And I think the one piece that you'll see is the number of courses we offer to all kids at each school, and also relates to the number of credits earned. And so I think the one piece to go back to, as you look at historical data, Colorado as a whole is somewhat new in the concurrent enrollment process. As we opened our school in 2008, was really the first years of which Colorado gave legislature to GIDS, high school, kids, the opportunity of college credit. So I'd like to do an example, and I won't go back to disrupt, but we started off for freshmen, information processing turned into CIS 118. And we started to see that success at all schools, they're offering a number of courses. So our partnerships within schools, number one, partnership is with ACC. The reason is, when you start offering concurrent enrollment, you are tied into a region for a community college. What ACC cannot offer as a community college, we branch out. So if you look on here, you're going to see majority of the courses are through ACC. Where we don't offer, you might see Red Rocks, such as in the Fire Tech. You might see TD College of Aurora, where you see some of the digital animation, digital media piece. You're also going to see CCU. Last year, we ventured into another partnership with Colorado Christian University to offer transcripted credit. And the difference between concurrent credit and say CU succeed, or AP, or IB, is it is transcripted credit from that university, which you can transfer into another university within the state, possibly out of state, and you work with that piece, which you have transcripted credit. The key piece in that process is the credentialing of teachers, syllabi, getting approval from that college or institute, university to make sure that the teachers are qualified and certified to teach it. And then you look at the grading piece, they have a C or better, which is how you earn the grades, which you earn college credit. So if you start looking at the piece, we go 13, 14, and I'll just take you back a couple years. I don't have all the data, because I don't want to end up in data block sheets. In 2010 and 11, we have 1,311 students enrolled in concurrent enrollment, and they earn about 4,106 credit hours. That grew in 2011, 12 to 2,743 students. 12, 13, 2,211 students. 13, 14, where you see at the bottom page, 3,252 students. Total credits earned through college, 10,116. Okay, so that's dramatic growth that you see with partnership inclusion with CCU. And then currently this year, it's only fall semester, because obviously some courses are semester, some courses are year-long. Right now, we have 3,185 students currently enrolled in concurrent credit classes with the opportunity to earn transcripted college credit. So as you look down the list of courses in schools, I think the key piece that we're trying to do, if you look at the back page, talk about growth and purpose, one of the things that we're working on is building new partnerships with CU and CSU opening satellites here in Douglas County, really working hard to, to build that partnership with the possibility to concurrent enrollment through those institutions. The number of students that not only go there, but the opportunity to earn credit and transcripted credit through their university. We'd like to build honestly more consistency and build a number of courses at schools that have equity, that opportunity, that access to these courses, and build up that consistency and that opportunity for all kids at different schools. And then obviously you're going to have some CTE programs, career and tech ed, which might be more specific to sites. So there's always going to be some individualizations and personalization based on schools and choice, just like you have with Advanced Placement, or IB, or a number of those great opportunities also. But I think in that piece to say what things are true within each school, and what things we want to branch out and specialize in. What questions do you have for me?
I've got quite a few.
Please.
First of all, when a student takes this concurrent enrollment and gets credit, is that reliably, reliably transferable to most all other universities?
Great question. So there are guaranteed transferable credits and credits that would be institution-based, just like AP or whatever else. A lot of times if you take a technology class, it might not be a general ed, therefore it might not be guaranteed transferable. So you work through the schools of what you want to do, what you're going to major in. So you look at a lot of student interest, what they might go in and major in, to earn certification, all that.
I guess I'm trying to get a feel for, let's say that at Castleview, somebody's taking the Spanish language, that's a pretty generic kind of course. Would that be transferable to Harvard?
So let's go back to, let's take a look at some of the AP classes. So I'm going to go back to-
I've got another question about AP. I wanted to just focus on this for-
Yep, so Spanish could be, but I've recommended that family is called the university that you're looking at, so if you're looking at Harvard and Ivy League, of admissions officer. When the number of these we do in our ICAP planning, our current college planning, would be to say, "Reach out to those admissions." If you're looking at Ivy League and special school, they're probably going to be more deliberate in what they do and do not accept.
Sure.
And that includes AP or concurrent credit.
All right.
So all the, just so that we're all on the same page, the, the ACC generates a transcript when you take one of these courses and you're successful in it. And if they have an articulation agreement with that institution of higher ed, then you're good.
Sure.
If they don't, you may, they may or may not accept it, but they are, you're taking them a transcript from a community college, or CCU, or whatever the case may be, just like you would be any transfer credit, so-
Okay, but as opposed to AP, let me just ask, as opposed to AP, that's, an AP successfully completed AP course, passing the test, is credited really in almost all US universities or colleges?
Yes, you're going to see, the course title could be a general ed course.
Well, that's what I, that's my impression it is.
The course title could be a general ed course, that would be, say, biology or chemistry. AP biology or chemistry could be that general ed course at CU versus CSU versus UNC, and then possibly to transfer to Harvard. I think the key piece would be in-state transferability, because of the articulation plan, it's much more of a guarantee. When you get out of state, there's a lot of times if I start off at CU and I transfer to Harvard, what they choose to-
But are you talking about these courses or AP?
Both.
Okay.
So I think the one key piece I want to highlight, so-
So they're very equivalent in that regard, do you think?
You know, I think the difference is, so for instance, to point out, so if you turn to Legend High School, you see a number of CCU classes that's through a university, transcripted AP, US history, AP biology, AP chemistry. Those classes are considered a CCU, general ed courses in that level, and they have shown, not only through our district, but others, to transfer to Mines, CSU, CU.
CU will take them?
Yes.
Okay. Next question. What are we as a district, what are we doing to ensure that these courses meet our expectations?
Well, that's a good one, the guaranteed viable curriculum.
So it, it's assessed in the same way as, as any of our own?
Yeah, you go through common ability, they'll get a background planning, ensure the outcomes.
So, so for example, this US history here, CCU, is, is evaluated with, with what we've been hearing about tonight?
Right, so our outcomes, our curriculum, have to equal their syllabus, and then that's how, it has to all mesh together in order for us to get in agreement with them.
All right.
That'd be general minimums.
And you guys are obviously making this judgment based on your own philosophy on how these courses should look, no?
Well, a couple of things. You submit teacher credentials, resume, transcripts to get the teacher approval, and then you have to go through the syllabus to make sure it hits minimums, then obviously work through what we want to kids to excel in, and so we might over-
We beef up ours.
-exceed their expectations. There might be times where as you look at each course, that you have minimums that you have to get in order to be approved, then we work within that approval piece to build our courses.
Okay, and I don't want to focus on the big controversial issue right now, but for example, in theory, we could offer the CCU AP history course at all of our high schools, could we not?
As long as you have a teacher who's, community college certified, yes.
Well, that sounds like to me that is a, simply a task to accomplish.
Yeah, there's levels, each school has a different credentialing piece. So for instance, ACC, you have to have a master's-
Infield.
-in that specific, or 18 credit hours in that specific, so maybe US history. So I think each university goes back to the resume, transcripts, and-
Okay, all right.
...the teacher's years.
So, so are teachers that are credentialed to teach AP history, would they be likely to be able, to be credentialed for the CCU course?
Depends.
They could, or they might not?
Number of hours. Comes back to hours, transcripts, resumes, success. AP, if you show great success on AP and AP exams, that builds into the credibility within the university, so look at that credentialing piece.
Do we have teachers that are not successful with the AP exams and curriculum?
You know, I think there's times where it depends on the number of years, so if you don't have 18 hours in that specific area, like a college professor, the difference is when teachers get masters, sometimes they get it in content areas, whereas if you're going to teach at a university, you get a master's or PhD in that specific US history or biology. I think that's the difference.
So, so CCU requires a master's?
They require a master's and/or different equivalencies to match it to their credential. And they go through the beans of their, of their content areas, and work in their credentialing piece with that university.
Okay. Well, I'd like to, I'd like to know a little bit more about that, just to, just to take history as an example, just as an example. What are 10 AP history teachers, whether or not we would expect them to be credentialed by CCU or not?
You know, I think one of our goals has been to increase the number of opportunities, increase the kid, each school and what they have, student desire. So I think there is that, that piece that we've been growing, the partnership with CCU just started last year with ACC, so we've all been building the number of courses you can see that grow within it, not only courses-
Well, you got two high schools, and only two high schools offer it?
Through CCU.
Through CCU, that's what I meant.
Correct. So I think that's the difference of making sure that as we work through this process, one, it's building how, and who, and when, and building that up to make sure that, that as we go through their process, that we have the time and the right people to do a block. So you've shown broken all of it.
One other question.
Please.
Your opinion, I know it's just an opinion I'm asking you, do you think that for embellishment of one's application to college, do you feel that these courses are as prestigious, if you will, or as, as, as great a credibility as an AP course? Or not?
Yeah, I think, I think when you look at purpose and value, all have it. As a dad of $2 in this district, yeah, I, I plan to have my daughters enroll and hopefully, I guess she's a veteran in this because it is less expensive, general credit transfer to university, plus, to be quite honest, I suppose a safe place to take it. You can have, take maybe one or two classes that are a college level rigor, have support, learn what it's like to take that level, to then go be more successful in college. It's not just saving money now, but it's also building for success to finish college and play them to work.
Yeah, I see all those advantages, so I guess a summary statement might be, I'm coming away with the opinion then myself, that they're pretty much equivalent.
Yeah.
AP history and, in terms of embellishment of a transcript, and these, some of these other issues we've been talking about, fairly equivalent to CCU's history course.
Yep.
Perhaps CCU's history course could even be better.
Well, Cory, Cory mentioned that Colorado's a little slow in this. Iowa was doing it in 2000, 2002, right in there.
Yeah, right in my graduate.
Yeah, so, so way ahead, and Valley High School's where I happened to be when it was really coming on, and we watched a shift to students going into the concurrent enrollment courses because they could save their parents' money, they were, many of them were graduating with a freshman year worth of credits, they were being taken all over the place, and teachers said that they could see that the students liked it, that if they finished with a C or better, they were leaving with a college transcript in hand. And so in Iowa, this became very big, and students really enjoyed the fact that they felt like they were getting a leg up on that long-
But don't they pay to take the AP history? I mean, what's the difference?
It's a lot less expensive to take them.
A lot less expensive, okay, I got you.
Well, and one of the things we tried to do, especially in our first year, to make sure a C equals a C, a B is a B, we did tag off our AP classes with it, and students still took the AP test. We wanted to make sure that if we're going to give out guaranteed credit and college credit, we want to make sure that our grades were rigorous and matched that needs. So I think that's part of the commitment that high schools and districts make with universities in this partnership, to ensure rigor, and prestige is one thing, but in my belief, what you put into is what you get out of it.
Yeah.
So I think that personal piece of not only doing well, but understanding the commitment level, the academics, to balance that side, plus the opportunity to earn credit and get ahead, that allows kids to work quicker. With tuition increases the way they are, to work quicker through their bachelor's degree, to then earn hopefully a master's, too, in that process to save money and purpose.
Well, the credit, the credit cost varies by school, so-
Yes, yeah, so CCU's $200.
For a class.
Per, per course, yes.
Cheap.
That's really cheap.
What, what, what do you, do you see an, an upper limit to this activity, that at some point it becomes?
You know, as I, when I'm researching schools and looking at some of the best, you hear models that- models of three plus one, two plus two, so it's two hot strong high school years of foundation, and if you're really accelerated base, you have two years of college, or three years of high school, and then you're ready for one year of college. I think that idea of building rigor in your senior year is critical.
Yeah.
I think making a purpose to the senior to tie it in is something that's a national movement, and I think as, as a piece where we are with our schools and our kids and our teachers, it makes perfect sense. We are doing college level at that junior and senior coursework, and I think those kids have that opportunity, they're showing that piece.
So, a successful student, in theory, all of their core courses, maybe in their senior year, maybe even some in their junior year, could be college courses.
Correct.
It could be.
Correct.
Question about, just, just to make sure it's, I'm clear, because just from my own family's experience, it's not a binary set of outcomes in terms of college credit. For example, I know CU, and my son's college in California got, gave, gave him credit for about 50 percent.
Correct.
So, sometimes it's, it's not all or nothing.
Correct.
Right.
So, there's, there's a possibility for talent creation, not a full-
So, what about these courses in that regard?
Uh, it all depends on the institution. So, those schools come in, they might waive their class, but you have to still take the number of credits in that content area. So, it all goes back to the school itself, how much they're willing to take in, what they'll translate it as.
Right.
So, it might be psychology. I get psychology credit, I don't have to take it as a freshman in college. Or it could be, we're gonna count this as a class, but you have to make, take another three-credit course in it. It all depends on the university, each admissions is a little bit different.
And then, and then on the topic of CU, what are the next steps in terms of partnering with the new wildlife experience?
Well, I'll tell you, they've invited us, they've invited us to hold a formal board meeting there, free of charge.
I'd love to move out on that and-
And I had nothing to do with that, they just invited us. And, and they are very interested in collaboration, and I think we ought to pursue it, because it's very conveniently located, it's a great facility, IMAX theater, a lot of things going on there that, in theory, you could embellish our educational activities here and strike up a relationship where maybe some of these courses could be CU courses and maybe get full credit.
We'd like that, wouldn't we?
Yeah. In fact, you know, the more we can articulate with the number of universities offers multiple classes, not every university or school offers every course. When you look at the number of our students that naturally already go to CU, CSU, the number of state institutions, it only makes sense if we could partner. It helps them, it helps us. And I think the number of kids that might take a CU class and then choose to go there, whereas if they don't do that class, they might choose a different school. So, I think that piece of it, that, that trying to get that partnership with CU is a huge priority of ours. So, whatever help we can get, we love. And I think it'd be mutually beneficial for the university and for our kids and our schools.
Doesn't CSU have a campus, a global campus as well?
Yes, in fact, that's, that's the piece, if you look at the goals down below, is not only look at CU now here in Douglas County, but also with, with CSU coming down in Douglas County area, to really look at those two schools, because those are, they're two schools that a number of our kids go off to.
Right, exactly, exactly.
Particularly, I had a parent come to me recently that was very passionate about STEM, and said that the CU facility in particular, and I guess the faculty that is contemplated for that, that facility would just be a great-
Wildlife.
Yeah, wildlife.
Yeah.
Would just be a real STEM node for a lot of our students. So, I am excited about that and-
If you're gonna focus on engineering, I know, it's just sort of graduate level almost.
And nursing.
And nursing.
We'd like to colla-, because Chapper already has the medical program. Be great for them to be able to collaborate and have right there the nursing program, which could be available to students also.
Yeah. Exciting. Exactly. I've been down there once, we've been one, and now continue that piece and realize what we can get inward and implement.
Questions over here?
So, I have two questions.
Please.
The first one is relating to, say, the ACC credit transferring to an in-state four-year school. It's my understanding that if you take freshman English at ACC, that that is accepted at CU or CSU or any of our four-year institutions, that that's kind of a direct transfer. Now, when you get into math and what, and sciences, it depends on what your major ultimately ends up being. Is that, is my understanding of that correct?
Yes. Majority of the courses that you take at ACC, Community College of Aurora, CCU, UNC, CU, that general English is general English.
Right.
Same title, that's why it's guaranteed transferable in that articulation.
In-state.
Correct.
And, and it always becomes a little bit fuzzy when you're looking at something out of state, and how, how they accept that actual transcripted credit regardless of whether it's from the community college or the, the four-year institution.
Correct.
So, then I guess my, my next question is around the credentialing of teachers. What does, what does that process look like, I guess, in a, in a timeline? You know, if we decide that we want to try to, you know, we've got interest at one of our high schools in increasing a specific class, what, what kind of timeline do we look at?
The more universities and schools that continue to jump onto the concurrent enrollment, the more opportunity we'll have to get more teachers. The struggle is, high school teachers with masters aren't the same masters of what diversity or-
Right.
-or ACC professors are.
Right.
The specific content area masters for 18 hours, most people that go through and do that within their education want to teach at that level.
Right.
Whereas, I think that's a piece that you have in the credential piece, so the more, like other states, the more universities we have coming into this, the better off we have to say, a master's of 18 hours isn't the only way to show content mastery and rigor that can match their level. And I think that's a piece we wanna work with at all the schools.
So, what opportunities would we then have for actually sending our students, say, to wildlife experience once that's up and running, versus them taking a course in their high school?
Um, well, two things. I'm gonna be a bit biased to my personal piece. If I can take in my own school, I'd rather my students stay there.
Right.
So, we can't offer in our school, the opportunity's already there, and talking with CU at wildlife or any other, and we send students to ACC and other places. Have a student go to Mines, Metro, they already can.
Okay.
So, they have the course that they wanna take at, at, at the wildlife experience.
Right. So, if we have a course at a specific high school, and we, we max out enrollment in that course, and we still have additional students that wanna take that course, but we don't necessarily have someone to teach it, we, we, are we making sure that students are aware that they have the opportunity to go? Are we maybe even working, and I don't know how this works with credentialing at the high school level, are we working with maybe getting that person to come to one of our schools to potentially teach a course there?
Yeah. So, a couple of things. I would say it's more on the too few. When you have too many, you can vote extra seconds, split it, do some different things that are creative.
Okay.
It's when you have too few, and when you have too few, that's where we look at the PSEO, where we allow kids to go to different schools, we've done satellite feeds, there's multiple ways in which you can bring that course, or allow that student to go to that, that school for that course.
Okay.
And we already naturally do that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Just, just something in that colloquy, I just wanna make sure I understand. We're not, we're not acquiring a capacity to be full in order for a student to concurrently enroll?
No.
Okay, I just-
Good example, calculus, three differential equations, that's after AP, calc, BC. That's always a course that's a little bit smaller in numbers, because that's a very advanced.
Right.
But we have a number of schools that offer that course with their own teacher who's credentialed.
Yeah, yeah.
So, for instance, that's usually a smaller class, yes.
But, but any student who wants to concurrently enroll can do, can do that, provided it's a, a course that we vetted and approved and-
Yeah, and once it's above and beyond, and we can't offer, don't have the class with their own school, we pay for the kids going off to the PSEO to go to that school.
Close secondary enrollment options.
Yep.
Great.
So, I have two questions also. So, what are we, I guess what are we doing to help educate our parents that these opportunities exist? And I know students probably know better than parents, because they see it around their peers, they kind of understand what their friends are doing and that kind of thing, but, you know, I, I, every now and then I'll hear parents say, "I had no idea that that was offered, I wish I would've known," or "I'm glad I know," or whatever. How are we getting that word out?
You know, we do a number of things. We have community nights, we do it within our registration process. The person who's critical in this, this information and is overseeing this is Sherry Bryant, and she's taught some of these courses at Montevista with business. So, she actually has a development plan to market and get more information out to families. So, each school does it within their course guide and out to families. We talked about it at eighth grade parent nights with our community kids in theaters. We do it when, when students get into our school and do tours, we talked about all the opportunities as freshmen on up within those, within those pieces. So, we do our best to market and increase our marketing and information to families, but I think that's another way that, as you see, that's a targeted piece that we are still looking at better ways and more ways to get more information out.
Right.
I think there's times, obviously, that as much as you know about our schools, I think you'd be surprised when it's like, "Wow, they have engineering, pre-engineering in these classes, have it," and for certification that parents are always surprised, "Why, this isn't like what I want to high school,"
Right.
Which is a neat thing.
Well, and I can speak from my own experiences this year in one of my daughter's classes, where she came home and said, you know, "I have an opportunity for college credit for this course," and then at back-to-school night, the teacher then also shared that with us. So, I would presume that at least some of the information should be getting home in that manner.
All the time, yes.
Yeah.
But it seems to me, I mean, I think, I agree, Director Silverthorne, so much of this is student-driven, and it's, that's a beautiful thing too. We want that to be a source of activity, but can we put together and say, like, the July timeframe, a catalog for parents and, and, you know, blast email that to all, to the relevant population of parents that, "Hey, here are the, here are the courses that are available," and explain to them it could reduce your tuition or bill in college, and they're high-quality, rigorous courses, so, so we just kind of help the parent be a part of a student-driven process. I think that would be a good thing.
It sounds like a special edition of Newsline, perhaps, with Randy and-
Yeah.
Yep.
We actually enroll in classes for next year much earlier than summer, so-
Okay.
-we'd wanna do it during the enrollment period.
Sure.
We are starting course guide development right now, and the finalize in December, we start registration in January.
I love it.
So, that's high school process. All the schools are similar levels, but that's high school process. But I actually think broadcasting that multiple times during the year-
Yeah.
-because timing of when, I think, you're always trying to communicate three different times, three different ways-
Right, right.
-as a minimum.
Yep.
So, I think that'd be a great idea.
I had an agency director who was a general, and he said you had to tell people eight times. That's a little excessive maybe, but yes. And so, my other question, I was looking at your, your goals and your, you're increasing your bullet points here on this last page, where you're talking about things like automotive and pharmacy tech and all that kind of thing. I don't know if you saw over the summer in the news, the Wall Street Journal in particular did an excellent job at coverage of Corinthian Colleges and what was happening to them. They, and for anybody who doesn't know, Corinthian Colleges is like a for-profit set of institutions that does things like, like pharmacy tech, or like criminal justice, and paralegal, and that kind of thing. And there is a crackdown, I guess, by the federal government about how much debt students can take on, and so that turned into a sort of a killer for them, and so now they're having to sell off all their campuses, really terrible. But I'm kind of seeing an opportunity here for helping students get into this kind of program. I mean, I myself have friends who are instructors at Corinthian and in other such institutions. I mean, are we looking at expanding that? I, I see a lot of these kinds of things are for people who go maybe to more traditional four-year colleges and university years, or colleges of design, or things like that, but for the kids who wanna get into stuff like pharmacy tech, or like automotive, or, you know, those more career-oriented things like that, how are we looking to expand that branch of, of the kid's future?
Yeah, and actually, that's a key piece that Sherry, Sherry Bryant's working with, is how we continue to let our CTE program and concurrent enrollment. We're looking at opportunities with similar performing arts departments, theater, arts, automotive. You look at some of those ways in which we do. We've offered some of the med prep, so nursing tech, farm tech, nursing assistant within our schools. It's how you continue to have a number of students who want to take that course semester in, semester out, and sometimes you might have a couple of years where you take it, and then you have to wait a couple of years and reoffer it. So, I think that's succession plan of when and how many, to look at that process. Some of it, there's times where the university provides instructors. There's other times where you're trying to work within that piece, that I think it's, it is a little more complicated right now, because it is run within Colorado, so as much we wanna move it quickly.
Right.
It's a process we want to work with universities and do it well, so that way we can keep this going within the, the guaranteed transferability. Because I think it's the key piece, the more you offer, you wanna make sure you maintain that rigor, to have the credibility with the institutions that we partner with.
Absolutely.
I think that's a key piece. I think it's a balancing act, but yes, we wanna expand out, and we're open to looking at those partnerships within skills. The number of kids we have certified within programs is another key piece within automotive. Within all, we could also give the, the college credit and work with ACC, and we have, but it's just that continuing partnership of, of balancing all the uses of it.
Right.
So, yes, long answer, sorry.
No, that's great, thank you.
I had another quick, just a matter of terminology, if it has any implication. It says CCU-AP US history.
Correct.
And then there's a bunch of others that say CCU-AP biology, for example. Then, in a different area, you've got CCU-college algebra.
Yep.
What, is there any implication to the AP part?
Nope, nope. In fact, some of them we wanted to tag, they all have university numbers and titles. We wanted to tag that certain courses are doing both and serving both purposes.
Both AP and college.
So, there might be kids who want to take the AP test and also go for concurrent enrollment.
Okay, that was gonna be my next question. Which of these courses is accredited by the college board, the ones that say AP?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
So, those kids are, also have the choice to take the AP test, and most of them, not all of them do.
All right, but then, we have 10 high schools that have college board AP US history, and only two of them are CCU-AP. What's the difference?
We just started with them. We just started the partner of CCU.
Just last year.
The courses are identical?
Yes. But teacher credential, make sure they go through the process, is what we still have to do in each of our schools. And that's the process with nine schools, to make sure that each person teaching that course gets approved. If I have two AP biology teachers, um, one might be approved, the other one might not. So that's a, that's a staffing piece of, well, how, who do we have to teach you biology, what's the right way? Can we get their credential, what do we need? So it's a complicated piece to have the university approve our course, our teacher, and, and that thing.
But as you have openings as a high school principal and you want to build your, you can hire for people that have 18 hours. Infield is what they call it. So you want to be the biology instructor of dual, or concurrent enrollment, it's called dual credit in other states. But, um, you have to have 18 hours of biology infield, and then you're an accredited college professor slash teacher.
Field is teaching.
Yeah, well, it has to be, like, instead of having a master's degree in curriculum, I have to have a master's degree in biology to teach college biology. So like Cory said, a lot of our high school teachers have master's degrees, but if they don't have those 18 hours in biology, that it doesn't count. So it's more complicated to get the accreditation for the teacher.
So for example, when we were growing our school, we posted for a person that masters or higher in biology to have this purpose. We hired Dr. Gallin. She worked in, in, uh, the science field for many years, went back and got her PhD in biology. Therefore, she teaches this piece, could teach, it'd probably be credentialed from any university. Hence the reason why we want to partner on with CU because she has not only the MA for 18 hours, she has a PhD. Now, she's unique. I mean, she's unique, she could go teach at the university if she chose, but she's choosing to, to teach at one of our schools. So I think that's a key piece within that, um, of how you look for people and how you try to match that up.
All right, so CCU college algebra then is a course that's taught at CCU that is a general.
College algebra, yep.
That's not attached to college board, and yet they also are, uh, offering credit.
Correct.
Full credit or some kind of credit.
Anatomy and physiology is another one, that's a CCU-approved college-level course with instructor that is not an AP.
So they don't have to be AP or IB, they just have to match the rigor of the syllabus at the college.
And your syllabus.
Yes.
And.
And the teacher.
So we're under no obligation necessarily to, I got it, I got it.
Yep. You're right, yes.
Thank you.
I have one. I notice over the years that I've been involved that, uh, this is actually true, that Douglas County and Pondo's concurrent enrollments have gone down. Is that due to scheduling? Is that due to interest?
No, uh, I think all of them have a plan in which to grow. A number of the schools, you see you succeed and CSU gold, so I think there's a number of programs that teach that are credentialed. So making sure that you match your school and your teacher, number of the hours, number of approval piece. I think it's a, a constant piece of, of timing and approval and growth. So, and I think that's, I mean, it's commitment, all the schools including those to offer more. Um, and some of those schools offer some specialty classes, others do not. And I think that's, that's unique to each school, and they're doing a fantastic job within those.
Correct.
Yeah.
I just wanted to see how, you know, high school scheduling is there, how big of a piece is that really playing?
Well, and some of it goes on to the timing of hiring. And who you give within those positions to, to match and be, uh, approved.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, all of you, for your time and attention. I know this isn't necessarily your area of field or study, but we appreciate you taking the time to really understand the process by which we evaluated the Common Core and the Colorado academic standards. The process our teachers went through to develop higher, more rigorous and integrated standards. And then the process we're working through to make sure we're measuring what matters to our students at a high level. So we appreciate your participation in this and, and all of your great questions, and we're happy to answer anything else you have. And I think Dana's stuff is really well-posted, and the white paper in your folders is sort of the history of the development of the curriculum in, in Douglas County School District. So Dana and I both are together. Okay, thanks. All right, thanks, everybody. Oh, I close now. Present, Laura.
Yeah, we're done with item number two.
We're done. See?
Well, our next scheduled meeting's in two weeks, hence right in this room, 21st, regular board meeting with, with the accustomed format, uh, therein. And, uh, so I'll look forward to everybody, uh, being back on the 21st and, um, not only, not only working on what's on the agenda, public comment that would be pertaining to any of those. I hope those that were able to attend tonight, also this is informative for folks to also, uh, develop their questions and opinions of what's going on in this areas of curriculum and assessment that we talked about tonight. So with that, I think we can, uh. Yeah, we can adjourn it. We didn't vote on anything tonight, so. Technical. Okay, all in favor of adjourning, say aye. Anyone not wanting to adjourn?